So with that, welcome. I would like to call this meeting to order. Document the time at 6:33.
Sure. Good evening. We'll call to order the scheduled Venuski Council meeting for September 13th, 2017.
And tonight, as you can tell by the crowd around the table, we have a joint city-school meeting, which we do once, we try to do it once a year. We're touching on the memo of understanding of how we operate between each other. So with that, if you would, I'd like to do the pledge. If you'd join me. Flag behind us. I pledge allegiance to the flag,
the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as for all.
Okay. So with that, Tori, if I could, turn it over to you. I need a serious mind transformation, so if you would help with that, I would appreciate it.
All right, so...
And again, so, sorry, just for those that are with us and others, we have, two years ago, we had the elementary school, is it three years ago now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so a long time ago, we had the elementary school in here doing a Focus on Learning session, and part of it was on a mindfulness practice they were doing in class to get kids to understand how to react and respond to different issues and items. It struck us that if we were going to have our students in here telling us what they were doing, and it seemed like a real good idea for them, then it can't be all that bad for us as well. So we developed, we adopted the mindfulness session, and Tori's been doing a great job leading through that. So with that, Tori, if you would.
All right, so what we do is we just take a comfortable seat. And it's really about arriving, so just sort of coming together and arriving. So we take a deep breath in and breathe out. And you can close your eyes or just find a spot to stare at. And you take another deep breath in and breathe out. Take another breath in, feel your body rise, and breathe out. And as you find a regular breathing pattern, we're going to focus our attention on putting our community right at the center of this governing event. City and school coming together to govern for the better of all citizens of Venuski. So breathe that in and breathe out. You can use your breath to settle in from where we've come from in our lives to arrive right here in this spot. So take another deep breath in. And in the next exhale, we'll come back in to govern for the better of all people in Venuski.
Thank you. Sometimes after going 110 miles an hour all day, throwing the emergency brake on the brain is tough, so... All right, so with that, agenda review and adjustments. I did have one item I needed to add, and that was an executive session for labor negotiations update. We will go through that as we get done. Any other adjustments? All right, and so our Focus on Learning tonight is, and I was going to say I apologize for this, but everybody that comes to visit us, it's through the Focus on Learning session. So you get a flavor of what it is we have going on here. So then we'll take up public consent and then our discussion. So with that, I'll turn it over to Sean.
Welcome. So today is the beginning of a four-part series on our systems of support. It's also relevant because the student support system policy is in first read tonight, so we can kind of connect some of those pieces from your agenda packet reading. This is one of the most important parts of the system in a school. Because as we know, learning is not linear. It's messy, and students are all very different. And a school is expected to meet them where they are and to help them to grow in various areas, whether it be social, emotional, behavioral, whether it be math, science, literacy, many, many different areas. So it's a very complicated concept, and so this is a way of bringing some organization and some systemization into how we support students so that they can grow in all those areas. So what I would tell you is that four years ago, we didn't necessarily have a very well-defined and delineated system of support. We had a lot of well-intentioned people and supports in place across the school that weren't necessarily coordinated. We have worked in the past couple of years to add staff so that we actually have capacity to provide these supports and interventions to our students and to our staff members in the form of training. You will see the academic support system referred to as MTSSA, which is Multi-Tierred System of Supports Academic, and then the same one with the B for Behavior, where it's focused on social, emotional. And another term that you'll hear a lot tonight and the next three sessions is around Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three. So Vermont has embarked on supporting this in school districts and supervisory reunions across the state now for about five or six years. And here is, in typical fashion, a very lengthy, very descriptive definition of what it looks like if it is a utopic type of a system that's put into place. But it has some of the elements that are really important. The ones that I would point out to you is, this is bringing together general education and special education. We are a very inclusive state in the way we educate our students, so we do not separate out students unless that is, we deem that that's going to be a benefit to the particular student and their needs. It has to be deliberate and intentional, and that's the part that we're really working on. We've kind of got the staffing in place, the programming in place, and now we have to really make that system work well together. So, what is it? At the bottom part there, Tier One, this is really the things that are put in place for all students and that should address most of the needs for most of the students. So when you think about Tier One, you think about the universal things that happen in school or in a classroom each day, and I'll give you some examples in a bit. Tier Two is more supplemental, so it's not outside of regular education, it is in addition to. So it doesn't mean you pull a student from a classroom because they're not getting their multiplication facts. They continue to get that what we call first best instruction from the classroom teacher in the classroom, but they may also get some additional supplemental work on those multiplication facts. And then thirdly, after you've gone through these tiers and a student is still not meeting the targets, is when you get intensive and individualized programming for students, like individualized education plans for students that are identified with disabilities. So this is another way of showing that triangle with some examples on the right, some specific examples of Tier One on the bottom being universal, which theoretically is supposed to address the needs of 75 to 90 percent of your students. I would argue at this point, with the needs in our system, that that number may be a bit high for us. And what's important, and when we're going through this training with support, is really figuring out who you are and what the needs are, and over time, being able to identify how many of the students are really succeeding with those Tier One interventions. And if that number's lower, why is that? Is it a function of the first instruction not being as good as it should be? Is it a function of teachers not having the training that they need? And other things. So this is an example of a Tier One, okay? We have school-wide expectations. You see them all over the walls, they're in the classrooms, in the hallways. You see specific expectations for the cafeteria, for the hallway, for the playground, and creating that common language and those common expectations for students pre-K-12 is really important. So that would be a Tier One, a universal. Food security, an area that we've invested in a lot in the last couple of years, would also be considered a Tier One. It's really addressing the needs of all students by enrolling in the community eligibility provision and providing breakfast and lunch and supper for students who are after school, meals during the summer, breakfast in the classroom, which this year has now been ramped up into the middle school, so all students pre-K-8 are getting breakfast in the classroom this year. The food bank coming every couple of weeks. So all those different things that we do, that would be considered also a Tier One intervention. So some, before I get to Dylan, some Tier Two interventions, like I mentioned before, they're supplemental, and they're supposed to be targeted in short term. So for example, if a student is not grasping a literacy concept after several interventions by the teacher, then the teacher is going to go, and they're going to know in this coherent system of supports, that they go see the literacy coach. And then the literacy coach would do some assessment and then would figure out a plan, whether they would get some supplemental support in that literacy concept from the literacy interventionist, whether they would maybe join a group of other students, possibly in another grade, to get some of that support. It could be outside the school day, if that's also available. But the really important part about Tier Two is that it's supplemental, because we don't want kids outside of the classroom when our most skilled people are the ones that are giving that first best instruction, classroom teachers. In Tier Three, an example of Tier Three would be like our therapeutic classrooms at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, where we have students who have been identified with severe emotional, behavioral disabilities, and so they are in a separate classroom with licensed teacher, trained adults, that are really working on individual, personalized goals for them around behavior and academics. So this is kind of, this is a visual to show you what it might look like for a student. Because like I had mentioned before, it doesn't mean that a student's going to need all of Tier Three interventions or all Tier One, or that they're going to necessarily respond to all Tier One. So Dylan, for example, is really, he's doing well with his reading and his peer interactions, his attendance is pretty good, so all those Tier One things that we're doing about emphasizing attendance, making a good community of learners in the classroom, the literacy instruction, whatever's happening with mediating peer interactions, that's all working really well for Dylan. Then we start to get into adult relationships, and it looks like those are middling a little bit, so the teacher may be working with, like in our system, may be working with a behavior interventionist or a behavior coach to develop a targeted supplemental plan around that, to improve those adult relationships. And at the same time, it looks like he needs a little supplemental work in science. Then, clearly Dylan has some anger issues, it looks like, and needs some really individualized work and a plan for that. And his math is suffering. So it gives you an idea of how a student can kind of be all over in this pyramid of tiers. And, you know, it's not to say that we sometimes will see students who, in all areas, Tier One, everything's covered, and then they're kind of the kids that are flying right through the system. There are also students who are pretty much operating with Tier Three supports all the time, and then everything in between, as illustrated by Dylan. So really, the meaning of tonight was to kind of give you some definitions around what is MTSSA, B, what are the concepts of Tier One, Tier Two, and Tier Three? And then what we'll do in the next few months is we are going to, we'll bring staff in, and they will talk about what does Tier One look like at the elementary, the middle, and the high school? What are those specific programs that we have in place? Tier Two, what are the targeted supplemental interventions? And then what does Tier Three look like? Questions? Wow, I am really clear, huh? Great. Or I just muddled you up with the acronyms enough that you don't know where to start? Okay? Thank you.
I think this will be a lot clearer as we go through the three different tiers and pull it all back together.
Right. Yeah, and I think the important thing also for everybody here to know is, you know, obviously, this is a multi-year, really big endeavor, and we, I feel like we are positioned well with the support of the community, with budgets and the staffing that we've brought in to serve students. And we are now in that place where, you know, we have educational support teams, or at the elementary, they call them chat teams, and we have grade-level teams, we have middle school teams. So we've built those collaborative functions across the school. Now it's a matter of people really understanding, when this student in my class has this need, who do I go to talk to about it? What's the process so that we can get those services to the student in a timely way? And kind of measure progress, Tier Two is a lot about progress monitoring, and then decide, okay, it's working, or what's the next step?
We've been touching on the education that we've given to staff over the past couple of years.
Yep. Yep. And the other thing I would mention, a universal I didn't put in here that we have just started, that we did with every adult, and it was mentioned in my report, is we did developmental trauma training. We did a full day with Dave Melnick from NFI, and that's really gaining a shared understanding of what trauma is. And, you know, we have many students and families who have been through various forms of trauma, and we have many students who have what they called adverse childhood experiences, Aces, who have had multiples of those throughout their sometimes young lives. And so that's a Tier One intervention that we have begun. We've got, you know, the custodians, the admin assistants, everybody was a part of that so that we have a common language about what it is and how to begin to manage it better and really be a trauma-informed and trauma-sensitive organization.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll move to...
Comments?
Yeah.
Should I start?
Yeah, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Infinite Call Pleasure. I am a community organizer with Parents Need Change, and we've been working with folks in the Venuski community on, oh, there's the X. On transportation to school in the wintertime for about two and a half years now. We finally got it in the budget last March, just for a pilot, just for the winter months only. We settled on the youngest kids that live the furthest away. And so over the summer, we've been door-knocking, we've been talking to folks, you know, trying to find out who's where, and all the newcomers, we have some very new folks in town who, you know, for the first time will see snow for the very first time this year. And so we just wanted to get back on the district's radar, because we know you have a lot going on, and try and figure out, you know, some accurate, you know, get some help around accurate numbers for, you know, the youngest kids who live the furthest away, who've been missing a lot of schools in terms of attendance. And so the last, the best data that we got from the district so far, a couple of years ago, was this aggregated data with this grade level and street and total absences that the kids were missing school. That really broke down, like, where people were anonymously, and so we think this might give us a better idea of, you know, how many students we're talking about in addition to the folks we're talking to. Yeah, and when exactly the pilot is going to start would be great to start talking about soon, because we had originally planned for the end of November, which is after the Thanksgiving vacation, up till about March, which we thought was the coldest month of the year. And so we have some folks, some Venuski families who, you know, who showed up tonight, and I think, you know, other folks have their own opinions to share. I just wanted to check in and say hello and welcome back. Thank you for the time.
I think, Infinite, based on our conversation from a week ago or so, I just wanted to bring one other point that impressed me.
Yes.
With the work that your team has been doing.
Yes.
And I wanted to make sure it didn't go unmentioned. And that is, one of the issues we had when we went out for a bid came back from Mountain Transit, that they just didn't have enough bus drivers. So one of the things that Infinite and his team had done is gone out and looked for people that could be, that were either already certified or could be certified to become bus drivers. I guess you had one that you were able to successfully, that may not have been with Mountain Transit necessarily, but... So they're reaching out into the community, here's an issue, here's a potential solution. And I think, you know, you guys would be to be commended for taking the extra step to try to solve something that's getting in the way of something else that you need. So I think we'd greatly appreciate it.
That gentleman, he's a parent of students here, he actually drives for Essex.
So, you know, he won't, I mean, he's only one person. But we also did, you know, contact La Moyle, and I think, you know, that would, to bring them into the bidding, you know, process as well. So thank you.
But it's just reaching out across a different divide, so that's appreciated.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Did we have anybody else? There's an awful lot going on in the background on this thing from a budget perspective and a lot of other moving parts that we're working with, so...
We'll see what's there sometime to say.
We have one person that wants to say something.
Sure.
She's new to the district, so...
Okay.
Welcome.
So hi to everyone. My name is... So we have been working for this pilot for, like, it's two and a half years, and I'm expecting a lot more from this. And then the parent for youth, the parent youth for change has helped us a lot about this, and she's expecting that something is going to change from this November, maybe we're going to get a bus for our children so they don't have to walk in snow. And today, I'm really happy to announce that I have heard that we are getting a bus for our children from this coming November, so I'm really excited to be here about that. So I'm really, really happy, and I want to thank everybody who helped us with this pilot thing, and then I am really excited about what's going to happen from November, and I would like to thank you everybody at last. Thank you.
So on to consent agenda and accept a motion to accept a consent agenda. Any other discussion?
I like some awesome things that were in the consent agenda.
Go ahead.
Around the superintendent report, I think that, when you mentioned it, in the Focus on Learning in terms of being a trauma-informed school and really tightening up systems to support all of our kids and families as best as possible, that's awesome. Also, the comprehensive communication plan of making sure there's another piece of it is being able to communicate incredibly well with families and children and what's going on there. I also was really impressed by the Facility Project Committee and how the robust stakeholder group that's a part of that, that also, that what I love about what we're doing in this district is continuing to include student voice in every juncture of decision-making. You know, and putting two students on that is another, you know, indicator that students really matter in terms of what's happening in the school.
Great. All right, all those in favor, accept a consent agenda as is? Aye?
Aye.
A poll? All right. Brings us down to School Board and City Council. The Memo of Understanding discussion that we've been having has been going on now for at least, that I can tell, five or six years?
Yeah.
Anyway. When we started, some of the interesting discussions were around, why do I want that in my budget? Why don't you put that in your budget, but give me the benefit anyway? To what can we do together to make sure we don't spend a tax dollar twice to provide the same service in potentially different places? And that's really the basis for this MOU, is how do we operate as a district to get the best tax, the best bang for the tax dollar for the community, regardless of how that has to play out? And I think we've done pretty well over the years, fine-tuning it. So with that, I'll... Sean, do you want to take us through?
Yeah, I just wanted to note, I wouldn't say that there's any substantial changes in the memorandum. We cleaned it up a little bit. The notes that I would give everybody is that we no longer have a teen center, so we did not include that at the top of the second page. We cleaned up some language in number seven around the snow plowing and salting services so that the city, if they needed to, they would be managing another provider to do that service for the school if they needed to. Under the District Agrees to, we omitted number three, and we basically, under the collaboration part of the MOU, we added a bunch of language about specific things that we're collaborating on, such as the master planning process, the housing commission, and the potential to work together on professional development around financing tools and capital planning. So those are really the changes from year to year in the memorandum. Do you want to add anything to that, Jess?
No, that was very well summarized. I think from the city's perspective, we are undertaking some significant master planning efforts and really value the voice of the school community in those planning efforts. Certainly, when you think about master planning and what we want our community to look like over the next five, 10, 15 years, our young people will be significantly more impacted by that than others. So getting their voices at the table early is important, and codifying that relationship in a supplement we thought was important. The council did have a discussion about this at their last meeting as well, and just one point of clarification on the capital planning item, which is item five, that's really meant to be a shared learning opportunity and a coordination opportunity. Obviously, state law dictates how we can and cannot do capital planning efforts together, but allows us to coordinate and think of the impact on the taxpayers as we're considering future bond votes or significant expenditures.
Yeah, I'll just tag on to it. Those technical conversations are fantastic and the forward-looking, we serve the same group of taxpayers, we tax the same people at the end of the day, and I think that that's really important. What's impressive is we sit here, and I think what, it's been great to see evolve over the last six years, five years that we've worked on this, is a really fascinating alignment of thinking, I think, in a lot of cases, where we are very much being considered a progressive thinking community that's looking ahead towards our future in a way that a lot of Vermont communities don't have that benefit at two governmental levels. And to do that together is really, really impressive, just to hear. Today, the continuum of support conversation was further evidenced by that. We kind of knew that in our guts. I think we recognize that as governmental bodies. We don't bring a single professional in to advise the city on anything that does not bring up the school and how important it is to the future of our discussions about how this community moves forward and how important it is that you're at the table for those conversations, discussions, and we're so incredibly appreciative of the time and effort that School Board members and Sean have spent to make that dedicated effort to be there at the table representing the interests of... to make that dedicated effort to be there at the table representing the interests of the school district. Because, you know, this, this community is, carries a lot of pride around its education environment that's created here and the diversity that we serve. But if the city and the school aren't lock and step on those items, I think we've got a lot to lose. You know, and then on our part, I hope we've demonstrated that we understand that the education of a child, the care of a child does not end when they leave that school door and are incredibly appreciative of all the coordinated services that we've been able to provide. I can't think of a better example than Thrive of that. So, really impressed with where we've gotten and think there's some exciting places we can go. But, yeah, very appreciative of all the work that you've done.
So, over time, how do we, it's interesting to update the MOU itself, wordsmith it, rearrange it for the teen center. How do we know we're not missing something else? How do we, is there a function where we, I don't know that we have a really coordinated effort to try to look at something else that we would need? Is there anything outside of updating this particular document?
Well, one thing, a more kind of formative process is, you know, Jesse and I meet monthly and we both bring kind of the latest and greatest things that are happening in the school and the city and we discuss that. So, I think the process would be from there, if we identified areas that needed to be included in the MOU, we'd probably start talking about them at our respective boards and then make that suggestion as we revise each year.
I guess I was thinking even a little bit different in that Public Works with our grounds crew. Don't know that there's anything to be had there, if that discussion has happened. You got, you got the other one that I had in here and that's the financial, you know, planning and education piece, that, that can't hurt, for sure.
One thing I wanted to add, when you mentioned the financial, the professional development around finances and, you know, those sort of things, what about professional development, sharing the trauma-informed strategies to the city also? And with the police?
Yeah.
You know, that if, it's not just the school being all on the same page around struggle, it's everyone involved in supporting our families to rise, you know, and to do well and to live well and to, you know, find that support. I feel like that training is also important for all people, you know, just like we're coordinating all the services.
And I, I think to an extent, our public safety crews do that, we call it something different. Through our, through the police academy and the fire, training, statewide fire training systems, they're certainly focused on trauma, dealing with residents with mental health issues, being sensitive to meeting, meeting people where they are in interactions. I do think we speak a different language and there's, there is probably some work we could do to, to share that, to share those resources in that language. But I think we're both doing it in our own silos and it's interesting to think about how we could share.
Brian, did you have?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I'm gonna simplify a little bit of what I was thinking, so thank you for nothing ahead of me. Because I don't think I would have, no, that's fine, I don't think I would have said it properly otherwise. I think one of the things that, that we could do to help the students as well is, one of the things that the police have been doing throughout the community this summer and last summer and I think maybe the summer before that, is having communal barbecues throughout the city. And I know we do a really good job of having the SRO officer up here, but I think having him in an environment where maybe we have the police come up here and do a barbecue for the kids or something like that, so that all those police officers now have an introduction to the students within their own comfort zone, I think could be super helpful for those folks when they end up back on the street and they're meeting these kids again for the first, second, third time or whatever like that, that might take a little bit of the edge off. So, I think that we ought to look into something a little more at their, at, meeting them at their comfort zone. Just a thought.
I think too, we'll add that, you know, we're engaged in a large-scale master planning process right now that has the potential to put the city on a direction that could gravely, greatly impact the population that you're serving too. So, staying lock and step on that and understanding how our information and data informs each other. And, you know, we wanna be really mindful of the ramifications of any policy levers that we pull, have on you and, you know, vice versa, frankly, I think too, in terms of the way you're serving your population too. So, I think staying, staying in lock and step on that's gonna be really important and we'll continue to try to offer all the opportunities and appreciate your proactive participation in that process. Because when we set goals and go towards them, you know, that's gonna be the marching orders for us in terms of a list of work items for our staff too.
Kind of an interesting timing, we're starting to see the changes of that master plan in a, in a small way right over here on Main Street, getting started. As we move forward and coordinate that with our capital planning, we're looking out for our space needs with our current population and needs. So, if that's gonna change, I'm assuming we'll be reaching out for your projections on, you know, how the population works. Is expected to, to change, are they, you know, single bedroom where it'll be just an individual? Is it likely to be two-bedroom with a small family? Any kind of growth that we can incorporate into that capital planning cycle? The last thing you wanna do in a good capital planning cycle is end up saying, oh god, we missed, we came up short. Right, so, all the information we can get would help.
And I think that's one of the huge advantages for us to have the superintendent at the table in our, on our housing commission. And a lot of that, those conversations about what we are trying to incentivize on the housing front with the municipal tools we have at our disposal, will take place in that room with Sean advising us on both what the school can, can shoulder and what the school is ready to take on as things grow. And so, hopefully, that can be a good communication mechanism as well. And thank you for your time and...
Absolutely.
I was really happy to see Sean's inclusion on that commission and think it's a good reminder for both our bodies if we move forward with different mechanisms or new ways of developing policy to look towards what potential there might be for a collaborative relationship there as well. So, it's the opportunity to kind of look ahead and continue to build on this cooperation and collaboration.
I've got one more. Let's do a change to a charter that lets you guys go first on budget presentations.
Would not mind that at all. I would not mind that at all, I can't guarantee how long it's gonna be.
You could just flip a coin at the, at the start of it. Start of the dinner.
Yeah, it's interesting how that ended up being laid out in stone like that.
Or at least that it is, it can be flexible, it can be determined by someone each year opposed to having it written in stone.
That would be preferable.
Yeah.
And give a little flexibility.
Of time as well.
I, if I listened to me talk for an hour, an hour and a half, I, I wouldn't hang around either, I would go...
Get right on that chartery right then. I wanna help you out. It's not actually a bad idea. All right, anything else, any other discussion? Appreciate some Jesse and Sean getting together and cleaning this up, keeping us pointed forward. At this, I understand you guys are gonna, you discussed at your last meeting and you will approve at your next one? Since you don't have a full rep here?
No, we actually, we have a body.
Oh, you do have a quorum?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right, so do you, we've got it as an approval as well, do you wanna?
Sure.
Go ahead and...
Sure. Yeah, we'll get one for final signatures. So, I entertain a motion to accept the school board district board of trustees memorandum of understanding between the city of Winuski and the Winuski Incorporated School District dated September 13th, 2017. Motion by Brian, second by Eric, any further discussion? Hearing seen none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Motion carries.
As well, I would accept a motion to accept the memorandum of understanding between the city and the school as written here. So, moved. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you guys greatly for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate your...
We'll do, we'll do one more quick action business, I entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Brian, second by Eric, any further discussion? Hearing seen none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. So, we don't leave in an endless meeting.
Yeah, that's right, that's right. That was very, that was efficient, efficient closure.
Thank you all very much for having us.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, it's great to have you.
You will certainly be in touch. All right, you too. I got you covered. No problem, come on. Sorry, wrestling with my iPad here. Our executive limitations, section nine. Superintendent monitoring report, financial conditions and activities. I'll open up discussion. So, so one of the things we changed this year, we're gonna, we adjusted the annual agenda to include all of the executive limitations. Up until this point, we've done half for each year. In order to give at least Sean up front, time to do a thoughtful job getting them done. After having gone through them twice each on a four-year cycle, what we're gonna start seeing now is all eight. Essentially, we will, we will be evaluating his performance on each of these eight once a year. So, I think it's a pretty formal cycle, not likely to see a ton of changes in any of these particularly. So, please make sure that we ask questions if anything comes up about, you know, where we are and any, any comments about alignment in interpretation back to policy. So, with that, and the other change that we did make is, is we have been having a discussion one meeting and then approving in the next. What we're gonna do now is discuss and approve one cycle, they don't come back into consent. Unless we have changes that we need made and if the changes are relatively benign, then we'll send them back into the consent for the next round and approve them that way. So, keeping that in mind as we approve these with the one, with the one-time cycle. Any comments on 2.3 financial conditions and activities?
Letter from Rebecca, there's no signature at the bottom, is there another page to that? Because I would think her doing that would have to sign off on it.
Yeah, I can have her sign it, usually she puts her initials right up at the, by her name in the from part.
I know, it's just a little detail, but...
Any other?
I look pretty good.
Yeah, it looks great.
Think from, you know, from my perspective, I don't know that we ever go uninformed from a budgetary perspective. We have the secondary piece of the auditors that come in later, but I think we've had some good runs through the auditors as well, so... Any reason, any, any other discussion on that piece? Okay, I would accept a motion to accept the monitoring report policy 2.3 financial conditions and activities as written with the one sole exception of in the final copy getting Rebecca's signature on her letter of confirmation. Motion moved. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of accepting, aye? Opposed? And also, as we go along on these, if there's something that we need procedurally, you wanna, we wanna take up either differently or something unique, please, you know, bring it up as we go along. And then, budget parameters, section B. Interesting to take up this discussion here, but I think we had talked briefly about some, you know, not having a whole lot of parameters on this, right? I mean, the details, I'm not sure exactly where things are from even closing up negotiations, so we got a lot of open pieces.
Federal funding is uncertain at best at this moment, so...
Still.
There are a lot of moving parts in terms of starting to really get our assumptions firm for FY19 budget planning. My, my hope is that, that a lot of those pieces will start to become more clear in the next few months as we head into November.
I think, I think from, you know, from 110 miles up, we've had pretty good luck with setting at least a starting point to be in the 3% neighborhood, two and a half to 3%. What does that look like, what would it cut, what would it add, what else would we need? And then, your team, Sean, has brought back in pretty good shape, you know, these are the, these are the things that would have to change or the things we would have to do without. And I think that, at least that first pass, stick in the sand has worked well, that make a starting point. I mean, what we actually need, you guys come up with a little bit, something different each year.
Yep.
Based on what we have, get it settled in, what's next, the onion peeling exercise, so... We can at least start there and, you know, we'll see how things sugar out over the next. We, we obviously working still through negotiations, so that'll have some bearing on the whole, the endpoint. So, hopefully, we'll have that locked up here.
I think one of the thing, one of the items for the board to think about and, and boards across the whole state and the SBA as an organization, the SA as an organization, is how do, how do we all get the, in the ear of legislators in the next few months so that we do not end up with some of these untimely mandates? Things that happen late in the process legislatively that really impact our ability to financially plan.
We, the, the SBA had a meeting here on, on Monday night, Alex, Alex had come. And one of the, one of the pieces that we reviewed was the focus for the school boards association with respect to the legislature over the next year. And one of the things that I had asked them to see if they could add was, the last thing in a legislative session should be guidance for school districts to be planning, because the next time the legislature gets together, we're done our budgets. So, hopefully, they can have the foresight to look out in, in end of May and say, you know, it looks like X. Even if they do it in January, they're gonna be wrong by definition. Any guidance they give is not gonna hold, it's not gonna stick, it's not gonna stay. But it's at least a better starting point than having this whip saw reaction in January, so hopefully that helps a little bit. October, we'll go through the rest of the resolutions, because we need to go forward to the conference and, you know, tell the school boards association that we're in with going in that direction, so. Like, August, October, I think we have that resolution review on the agenda. All right. Next is the superintendent evaluation and expectations session. In the packet, what I did is I put in the rolling summary of all of the executive limitations, that was page two. And our response, whether we believe that the interpretation was clear, whether we believe that the report of being in compliance was, was accurate, we had approved all of them. And again, some of them go two years back. We always have the ability to bring any of these, if we have any concerns with any particular section, we have the ability to bring them back at any time. So, we should not wait to have them come up in their turn if there's something we have a concern about. That's part of a great evaluation is something comes up, we go out and we look for it, try to measure it and then figure out if, if the responses fit. At the top on page one was the ends piece, which is still in, you know, we're still moving forward on that, trying to get to, you know, some of the... is still in, in, you know, we're still moving forward on that, trying to get to, you know, some of the measurements, which part of our discussion Saturday at our retreat, getting to a better definition of, of those measurements. Um, interpretations of the local, global citizen, the healthy lives, uh, discussion. So those are still open at this point. We haven't, uh, gotten to those at this point, so. Interesting to have an open forum, camera entailed, uh, evaluation of your own performance. But mine is usually done behind a closed door, but you get the benefit of having an open session. With that, um, I, I'll, let me start, and then you guys can, can piggyback. I believe, uh, with all the interpretations that were done through the executive limitations, we've been, we've been happy with the performance in all eight of those areas. I think the one thing that strikes me as best is, is not leaving the board without knowledge of things that are going on, the releg- the regular notes of, um, this is gonna be on TV, cameras are here today, somebody showed up, you're gonna see this. Notifications, to me specifically, some of the things that Sean and I talk about, and this is nothing, uh, from a, from any kind of a perspective other than communication to the chair, sometimes the things that come up, the less we know as a board about them, the better, in case anything asked, happens to come before us, as our quasi-judicial role of being a judge and a jury, if you have previous knowledge, you probably can't be as impartial as you need to be. So I try to, I try to balance that communication with the information Sean gives me, and do I need to push it? Should I push it? Usually the way you get caught with that thought process is you get caught behind the eight ball, but, so if there is something that we, you don't hear about and think you should have, by all means, can let me know. But financially, I think Rebecca does a good job keeping the financials up to speed. Coming back to us through the, both the quarterly financial management reviews that Jen and I do, and then summarize for you guys, and then the, you know, the monthly, the monthly bills, so. I think, um, contract coming up in January for Sean, so another thing to think about. I tried ten years, but he wasn't ready quite yet. So, keep working. Uh, other, other thoughts?
I mean, only that happy is an understatement.
What's that?
Only that happy is an understatement.
Yeah. Right.
And just his ability to engage with community partners too, is just a wonderful, huge asset to the school district.
Alright. Thanks. Yes, thank you very much for the, the work you do. It lets me sleep better at night from this. Alright, anything else? I would say successful. Any changes to the process as we have it? I keep mentioning, this is just a quick aside, but I keep mentioning to other board members, I ask specifically, what, you know, they ask, you know, what, what, what do you think is important? And I ask them very straight, do you evaluate your superintendent every year? And I get a lot of blank stares. But if you have somebody that's in a position that you need them to know what's going on, you need to have that open and honest discussion on a regular basis. I love this approach because it just breaks down eight different categories of things that we evaluate on. We get to, to say,
So refreshing.
Does the inter- does the interpretation match what we meant? Did we really mean what we said? And does the data support what the interpretation against what we thought we said? And do we believe it's in compliance? I don't know that there's a more effective or efficient way to do this, so.
There's one thing I wanna add, um, in terms of superintendent valuation is the fact that you've got the U fourteen girls soccer team going on your own. We would not have a middle school soccer team right now if it weren't for that. Because the girls that we had, we started with six students. There was, for some reason, the middle school boys have like twenty-eight players. The girls do not. And you got a spring U fourteen, and those girls are com- they, they didn't come out. But once we, you know, other, other girls had to sort of gather, it made a huge difference, I think, in their confidence, being a part of a team. I mean, there's so many layers to being a part of a team and giving, and they just needed the opportunity, and you provided that for them.
It was a nice transition for some fifth graders too, to get to know sixth and seventh graders and-
And noticing that our girls don't have as much el- early elementary, middle school opportunities. For some reason that the boys somehow are, and they have twenty-eight, you know, going out for it.
Coached?
That's massive.
I coached the girls' team in the last spring, yeah.
And gave them the opportunity, I mean, driving them and making sure that it's happening. I mean, it's a, it seemingly-
A lot of parent, a lot of parent help. There were some really wonderful parents.
Right, and they were, and the, and the parent enthusiasm, I mean, it just, you can, you can see the seed growing that you planted, and, and it's good to see that that's something our students extends their capacity.
I'm not sure which yell report that fits in.
I'm not sure either, which is why I said it, because it just, I mean, the, the outcome of that
Treatment of staff.
Just manifested itself out on the news. They got, they get to have a team this season.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Alright. Good, so, next, uh, governance, uh, style. So we got a board monitoring and report in here, four-dot-one. Had brought it back, I think, once before, but didn't have the last section done. So really the only, the one new piece is the interpretation data and, uh, conclusion in four-dot-one-six, I think was the unfulfilled portion, but I'd like to just ask for any other comments on, okay, so, again, more of a review, but a little bit for Alex. One of the things that we're doing with the, the governance processes and the board management delegation is we have to evaluate ourselves. And so these reports, hopefully by the end of the year, the way the agenda is set up, will be done, all of these past one. The hardest one, I think, is gonna be past two. Cause past one is getting it on the books, not necessarily completely understanding what it is, but past two is a fine tuning of, of where we are, uh, and where we really have past data to try to look at what we're doing, so. Um, trying to get these all completed, um-
Double into into at the end of that data.
On the end of the va- very last one?
Yeah, four-point-six.
Okay, yep. Got it. Alright. Um, two in here, partial compliance. Um, the last one I put in there as partial compliance strictly because we're not done. You know, when, when we're done, I think, I think we're moving, I think we're moving slowly on through these, but we'll get them done, but that was the only reason for partial there. I wanted thoughts on four-dot-one-three as a partial. Um, and this was, uh, enforced upon a self-discipline needed to govern with excellent discipline will apply in matters such as attendance, preparation, policy, making respect for roles and ensuring the continuance of, of governance capability. Uh, can change its governance processes at any time. It was scrupulously observed those currently in force. I, I wasn't sure on this one. It was partly, uh, due to, um, attendance that we've had. I mean, it, it, stuff comes up, I understand that, it, it does. And the other one is preparedness, and I also understand that things can get saddled between Friday and the Tuesday night before the meeting. So I tossed in here partial compliance, and I'm just wondering thoughts, whether that accurately reflects?
I think in order to really actually measure that, we need to do our self-reflections again, because you really don't have any data to be, back that up.
I was actually supposed to bring that, wasn't I?
No, I haven't.
Oh, okay.
Well, the other data point that you do have is from your, from your meeting minutes that says who was here at which-
Right.
From an attendance standpoint.
For attendance, right.
Right, so for that one element of it, you do have some data.
Right.
And the other question for me around that would be, when you're talking about attendance, you have an ideal, right, that every member is at every meeting. You also have a legal requirement, you've never missed, you've never had to cancel a meeting for not having a quorum.
You've always had a quorum.
So, you know, that's kind of interpretive on the part of the board about-
Thank you for saying that, because we, you know, there's an assumption that it should be a hundred percent attendance, which is what we ideally want.
Hundred percent of the time, we have to have a quorum. Right?
Right, I've never thought about a hundred percent of the time, we need to at least have a quorum.
But do you think that's a realistic measure?
To have a quorum?
To the quorum or a hundred percent all the time?
To have a hundred percent all the time.
No, no, I don't think that's gonna happen.
Nothing's ever a hundred percent, right?
Okay.
Kids.
Well said, sir.
Right, so, but, so that makes sense.
Mike, I'm fine with having a preparation be a metric, but just reading during this, I mean, cause you're conflating possibly like preparation with retention, I mean, to memorize fourteen pages, sometimes you have to go back and read wording.
Yep, yep. I, I, I am more than willing to go back and, and adjust. Uh, I have no concern with that, and I probably would with the, uh, quorum piece, so.
Yeah.
Alright, well, I can certainly be ha- I wanted to, to generate that discussion.
I would say we are in compliance.
Okay.
We are very compliant.
Alright, and again, the last one is more just simply that we're not done. Alright, so what I'll do is I'll take four-dot-one-three back, and we'll put it in consent the next time we come back.
The only thing I would caution with six is, are we ever gonna be done? Are we ever gonna have enough community outreach? Like, that's just an ongoing thing anyways, and are you out of compliance continually for it, or are we doing what we need to do to be within the just-
Yeah.
Cause I don't know if you can ever be in total compliance with that.
Right.
Something to think about.
Yep, and, and I think maybe part of what our discussion at the retreat on Saturday will entail is, is how do we do that a little bit better?
Which one, the six?
Yeah.
Yeah, the last one. It is, uh-
Monitoring discussing our process and performance on a regular basis?
Self-monitoring
Yeah.
Board activities, uh, discipline.
Board activities. This one just says discussing board processes and performance on a regular basis. Self-monitoring will include comparison of board activity. Comparison.
Yeah, I think-
Little interpretation. Who are we comparing it to?
The, um, uh, whether we're, whether we're actually following it, right?
Following what?
The-
What's the board, I mean, cause I guess what I'm, I'm interpreting is like it's our, our process and performance on a regular basis in terms of our meeting and following, um, you know, governance process.
Not getting into means, not moving-
But that doesn't have, did I hear that we were also using this to say, like, whether we go, our engagement with the community?
The outreach further, our community outreach further?
As that.
Okay, so the interpretation then?
But the interpretation doesn't necessarily say that either.
No, it's just the data.
Just in the data piece.
It's just that we interpret this to me, and we follow the guidelines prescribed by pos- uh, the governance process and board management. We conduct our business using the model to get our work. Which we do.
Okay. We would go to compliant on that one too?
I think we need to, the data-
Interpreting it differently?
Move out the community outreach out of the data, cause I don't think that's what that policy is talking about. I'm su- sure it should be somewhere about our community outreach, because that's part of our job.
That'll come in one of the other ones though.
That's in another policy.
Okay.
And we won't be in compliance at all.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I would, I would suggest you could approve this tonight. I mean, there's just technical changes to it, if you wanted. You know, the changes I hear are four-point-one-three going from partial to compliance. Four-point-one-six, the into into, were the only changes I heard.
And taking out the community outreach.
Yeah, the community outreach in the data would have to come out. That's, that's the very last sentence in the-
Yeah, we need to find that we need work on our community outreach further, and that we're doing a very good job adhering to the governance items.
So take out that whole sentence?
Maybe just the part-
Just the first piece down to the end.
We find that we, uh, need to-
We're doing a very good job of hearing and just starting there.
Yeah.
Okay, that's mental straying, apparently.
No, it's good. No, you're do- thank you for taking this on.
We get it. But it's always good to have something on, on paper before you can-
Exactly, it helps us be able to like look in, like, wait, what does it say again? Yeah.
So I'll, I can it, have, you know, Sandy has already, she probably hasn't put in this one in the new format yet, right, hasn't? Uh, because we haven't-
I think it is.
Yeah. It looks like it is.
I think it's okay.
Alright.
It's pretty, uh, clean.
Alright, so with those, uh, adjustments, I would accept the motion to accept the four-dot-one.
So moved.
Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And with that, we would like to welcome Destiny. We saw you once in the spring, and now you're back for a regular visit. And Alex, welcome back. Hope summer was good?
Yeah, it was.
Alright, good. So we'll turn this show over to you guys.
Okay, so, starting the school, new school year, um, so first I would like to talk about our back-to-school BBQ. Lots of great food, uh, we got me a lot of new students who came, um, the upcoming ninth graders, uh, I met a couple of them. They liked the barbecue, and, um, I, we had also had, um, extra time after the barbecue to talk to, um, teachers. And if we want to change the schedule, some of them can, and had advice of what classes to fill in, if they had study halls. And I saw a couple of faces that I recognized. Um, and, um, we had some students actually went on this trip that Destiny can explain.
Okay, so in the spring, we had twenty applicants to, um, attend this institute called the Youth Leadership Institute, which was held at Babson College. So we took seven students, um, to attend this institute and hear about other organizations and their projects, um, regarding proficiency-based learning, student voice, student-led classes. And it was just a lot of, um, new knowledge coming to us just to hear about what other schools are doing, what other organizations are doing. And the seven students are now currently planning on what they would like to do with that new knowledge and see if they wanna like steal, I guess, or like take ideas from other schools. Cause last year, um, half-day, half-day planning and the, um, community building did come out of YLI. Move on with that. Today was our first half-day. We had a fall festival with field trips. Groups of students split it into three, one field trip being hiking Mount Philo, um, going to the corn maze, and going apple cooking at Shelburne Farms. In the morning, we had a huge breakfast with all the students in the cafeteria together with a kickoff of an advisory competition. So we did a huge trivia game. Um, and this is gonna be year-long, the advisory trivia competition. So, um, big announcement right there. And advisory this year, um, we had feedback last year that, um, there wasn't much structure. So this year, we're focusing a lot on career and college readiness, um, and one-on-one check-ins, making sure students, uh, feel comfortable with their schedule, feel comfortable with, um, the loads of homework and everything, so the advisory, advisor, um, checks in with them once a week. Um, students in their about eight to ten-person advisory circle together and just share, um, how they're feeling at that moment. Practice mindfulness sometimes, um, and, yeah, it's really a le- relaxed time after the classes and after lunch before diving back into classes, so.
Um, also, uh, I've been, um, introduced to, uh, technical school this year, so this year I'm going to, uh, BTC, where I am learning aviation, and also, uh, a handful of students are going to Exxex as well, either doing culinary or wherever they prefer to, uh, take into their senior year or after school, like, after their postgraduate. And it's a, technical centers are really great for having students learn hands-on. And for students who don't learn well in classrooms can go to these tech centers, either to Exxex or Burlington, to take whatever, um, they feel like they would like pretty much. We also had, uh, auditions for Cinderella, and, uh, Winuski High School, a male school production. And I wasn't there, but, um, I'm pretty sure there was a lot of people that signed up.
Yeah.
And lastly, we have sports. Uh, varsity girls have a, um, one-one record. They, yeah, soccer.
Well, did they win tonight?
They did.
They're playing tonight.
Well, I don't have the scores right now, but Oxbow, they had lost two-zero, but Richford, they have won one-zero. Uh, as well, varsity boys soccer, um, they have won all three games, the, at home. And have an outstanding team that always blew out the competition, either twelve-zero or five-one. And have an outstanding team that always blew out the competition, either twelve zero or five one. And we also have students that, uh, that like football enough to join the Burlington High School team. And they right now have a two-zero record. And that's all.
Thank you.
Destiny, can you talk a little bit about the Water Works?
Uh, yeah, um, today, we took a diverse group of students to the Water Works restaurant downtown Winu- in downtown Winuski. Um, did some amazing food tasting there. Um, the owner greeted us, the chef was there. Um, I think it was just a great opportunity for students to, um, explore restaurant management, um, see what kind of jobs are available to them during this school year. I saw some students pick up some applications, so that was nice. Um, what else? I think it was just a great opportunity for students, um, to come together and sit down, have a nice meal and just see what they can do for the community. And it was nice to connect with people that, um, students don't usually, uh, get to, uh, chat with.
That's great.
Yeah, so that, that was kind of the brainchild of Maura O'Neill, who's the director of the Winuski Community Partnership, who kind of bins, brings all the businesses together.
Hmm.
And David Abdu, who is the owner of, of Water Works. And, uh, we met with them, so every early dismissal this year, we'll be taking a group of students down there. We're gonna high school, middle school, probably upper elementary and talk about different, you know, there'll be the food tasting, which is amazing, but also the, um, kind of career trajectories of some of the folks, uh, that work there. The chef actually went to our school, uh, for part of middle school at Raftery. And, um, talking about the different roles in hospitality and the rest- restaurant industry, doing, uh, you know, a little bit on etiquette and, and things like that, so very exciting. And the whole idea is that in the future, um, that other restaurants would come into the fold and also, um, open themselves up to working with us. And, uh, thanks to Water Works who was really, really great about forming this partnership and, and to Maura as well.
Yep, great. Awesome. All right, uh, next. The district capital project committee needs a board member. Kick that discussion?
Yeah, so you saw in your, in the report, as Tori had mentioned, the, the committee of, uh, various stakeholders. The, the, uh, committee will be run by our facilities director, Mick Musket, and, um, Joe Green, who, uh, from Joseph Architects in Waterbury, who completed the initial feasibility study. And, uh, we are looking for a board member role. The, uh, first meeting is, uh, September twenty-sixth. And right now, that first organizational meeting is set for three thirty to five. The group is gonna kind of determine from there, um, you know, what works for most people moving forward.
And the time, the time commitment, it was viewed to be once a month?
Yeah, monthly meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, with, with some work in between, cause the way, with the idea is that, um, uh, you would go out and, uh, get your kind of representative role perspective. So the board member here would probably come to the meeting and talk to the rest of the board about, you know, what the agenda was, what some of the questions were, get input for the rest, from the rest of the board, and then bring that back to the full committee. You have teachers, parents, students, who will be bringing those respective role perspectives back as well.
Okay. Sound like anything, anybody? I have some level of flexibility.
How much do I know about the board, you know, but I'll give it a try if y'all is the new guy.
I think, I think one of the, I think one of the pieces of this is the, the, there's been a group that has done some work that says, what do we have now? And if we look at some level of assumptions on growth rates, what might we need? What would that look like? And now it's a matter of understanding what, what we would actually wanna nail down for requirements that we would actually go forward with. So I think, I think it'll develop slow enough that you'll have a base here over four, five, six months. Um, you know, there's the, there's the piece of whether you, you know, decide to join us again in the March with another election and-
Right. And that's the other thing, you know, I'm only here for, you know, potentially, not that, you know, I'm thinking about running all the way, but you never know what the public thinks of me.
Fresh eyes.
Yeah, it's, so, you know, if it's something that you wouldn't mind, there, there's one other piece coming up that the city, that Seth and Jesse, Sean and I had talked about earlier that may be coming up that'll need some, a bit of time as well, so.
No, I just need to check my calendar for September twenty-sixth.
And then after that, the meetings may be flexible time-wise, right?
Yeah, they're gonna talk about it as a group.
Who can do what when.
Yep. Also, there will be, um, probably monthly, if not every other month, you know, detailed reports that I will be putting in my report to the board. Um, I would expect periodically, we would have some members of the committee come and talk about the progress thus far to the board, uh, cause we also wanna make sure we'll have meeting minutes and agendas posted publicly, all that good stuff, cause we wanna make this a really inclusive process.
Ultimately, our piece is gonna be bringing it to the community. If we have something we're gonna put a bond out for, that we have to get voted in, right? So that ultimate, that's the ultimate goal for us is to understand what's going on, the process that was used, the cost that it's coming through to. And so, that's kinda, you wanna try it, Alex, and see where it starts from and?
It's a hard day for me.
Okay.
Cause if, if-
What day of the week is it?
It's a Tuesday. And, and the problem is, is if it wasn't for the fact that I have to do a presentation for the president of the university during the three, I would probably be, that's, that's, that's a meeting that's not movable.
Yeah, so, so let's, let's do it this way, since he's gonna be inflexible with you, I will be flexible. Don't tell him I said that.
Yeah.
Um, but what I can do, I'll, I'll, let me put my name down, I'll, I'll do the first one.
And then-
To, to show that we're, we're willing to, to participate and then depending on where we go, I, we'll, we can talk about best time for you in case we get a vote.
Right.
We may not get a vote that wins on time, but...
Yeah, that's, I can't move that meeting.
That's fine. That's fine. I'll, I'll, I'll do the first one and then we can, uh, we can see how it works after that.
You don't mind?
Let it go. Not at all. Not at all. I'd be love, love to leave work, especially if I've had more days like today.
All right. Gonna have to work better with you to turn the camera off from time to time when I shoot my mouth off.
All right, so onward to then, uh, two policies tonight, student attendance and, uh, timely enough educational support system. Um, so student attendant, uh, as we have had, we'll have, uh, our current policy and then, uh, the model below that. So Sean, I think what's worked best in the past is looking to you to just understand how they fit now and which one might-
Right.
-fit best, and then we can take the discussion from there.
Right, so I think in general, the model policy, um, it includes some of the, like down in the administrative rules and procedures, there's things in there that need to be included that are not right now in our procedures. Um, so that would be a, a portion that I think would be important to, to add. The administrative responsibilities in the model is already in our procedures. And as always, I think there is a more positive kind of beginning statement in our local policy that's good to continue and, 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 uh, retain. So my suggestion would be kind of a melding of the two. There's a lot of similar language between the, the, the local policy in the, the second and third paragraph with the model. So, yeah, I would, I would wanna take the model policy, put some of our first paragraph language into that and then, uh, make sure that we have the administrative rules and procedures, uh, in the model policy included.
Okay.
One thing we, um, that would be also a nice addition to this, um, is that third paragraph is very, um-
Which one?
The one the district encourages administration, but it goes into the district not only encourages good attendance, but also take whatever legal action is necessary to enforce it under the requirements of law. Frequent probing, absence, repeated tardiness with set, without satisfactory reason may be grounds for disciplinary action. I'd like a little restorative language in there.
The negative, take the negative connotation or tone.
It doesn't have to be so punitive, because this is about community building. And this is about building relationships with our families, with our students, to get to understand why the absences are happening so that we're building a supportive system of please come to school, not-
Right.
You're gonna end up courting it, don't.
Right, so I'd like to see if we can shift that to some restorative language.
Understanding also that there is a legal requirement with the, the letters that we put out and that we have to make a contact to the state's attorney at some point if it reaches a-
And he had to disclose that to families in some way.
Absolutely, and I, but I, I feel like if we can balance that with some restorative language, it's not to, to question that it's a legal obligation.
But it can be in the procedure.
But it, it can also be, we can be straightfor- we can be upfront about the fact that we're here to build relationships, to be supportive and to get to the root of how can we help you get to school, just like what our families came here to say.
Yep.
In terms of transportation and what are some of the roots of, of absenteeism?
Yep. Yeah, cause there's not, there, there isn't that tone in the, in the model that, you know, will take legal action. No, there, there's not the-
Oh, there's not that, okay.
It doesn't, I don't see that in the-
Right.
Not that direct anyway.
Yep.
So, and, and it's likely in the procedures anyway, right, to the things that you have to do, so.
Yeah, it doesn't, I don't think it states it in the way that Tori was describing.
That would be in the policy, the, the tone setting piece. Yep, all right.
It'd be nice to start reading policies that do have relationship building components in it.
What's that?
You'll read it?
Yeah.
Almost there.
So anything else on the, and the procedure is, is yours, that's, that's pretty much-
Yeah, it needs a little updating too.
Right.
We no longer, uh, give out ordinance violations for the truancy.
Oh, really? Okay.
We do a lot of other things like you were describing.
And I think having that upfront in there is important, but, but the, but the ord- you know, it is law.
Yeah.
It is law, bottom line.
All right. Good. And then the educational support system?
I mean, the model policy is really simple.
Yeah, I didn't, uh...
Well, again, our first paragraph is good.
Mm-hmm.
Meet the needs of all students.
It's the same. Yeah, they're the same in the model and the, yeah. And I, I, what I wondered from the board was whether, do you, do you think that it's necessary to have those or helpful to have the definitions that are in the local policy or not? Cause that's really makes up the other part of the, that's the only different part, really.
We the ESS versus the EST?
Uh, I mean, the definitions that are like one, two, and three about general ed means, accommodations means in the local policy.
Um... Who's reading these policies besides us and staff? You know, I'm just thinking like, who are we educating on terms of school language? And is it, I mean, obviously, it's not necessary from a models policy perspective.
Yeah, I think we're-
But education does have its own language.
Right, so ESS and EST are important to have in the procedures because we actually have to report to the state about that programming annually. But that's all, it's, that's all in our local procedures already.
But the first three?
Yeah, I think ultimately, in all of these policies, regardless of which ones they are, they're interesting, but they kinda sit on a side until somebody needs either something from it or they violate it. And then is what's in here, does it give enough clarity to have Sean and his team understand how to respond and react? Without having a lot of opening, open holes, uh, potentials for misinterpretation. And in that regard, I think to some degree definitions are, are a li- add a little more clarity.
I mean, from a, from a public viewing standpoint, having the definitions in there makes sense.
Sure.
Because not everybody knows-
Right.
-what those phrases mean.
It's not gonna hurt to leave them in if it would add value to whoever wants to read these.
Yep. So other than that, I think, you know, basically keeping the, the local policy as is would be my recommendation.
Yeah, the, the model on this one was done quickly. And the procedures you guys are pretty much prescribed and how you, how you deal with that, so.
Yeah, I mean, the procedures may change in the next couple of years, given what I talked about in the focus on learning.
Mm-hmm.
But for now, they're a suffice.
All right. All right, very good. Anything else, any other discussion? All right, so we'll see in the consent agenda next time, uh, molded, modeled, or combined student attendance. And the educational support is pretty much what we have now, unless there's any references that need to be adjusted.
Yep.
Okay. Good. Uh, the other item on our annual agenda is our board governance budget, so, um... This one here, I think we always start with what do we have, what did we spend, and go from there. So I think last time we talked, we had five thousand dollar line item and... Uh, does, that is, that doesn't account for the VSBA membership?
No.
Fees, okay. So they changed the structure on that a little bit. I think if I saw it right, it was like thirty-six hundred dollars?
Yeah, I th- I think it was a little less than that.
Some, somewhere in that neighborhood anyway for, for our, but that's not included in here, so.
Right. Really, this is board development and board education, like when vows come in and work with you, when we've had, uh, we had a lawyer come in and talk about open meeting law a couple of years ago. And, uh, that's also on the retreat agenda Saturday.
Right. What do we want for ed- education, so keep, keep in mind?
Do you wanna go to the next group for the financial thing? We started it, I'm not sure. Isn't there one more piece to that? Or not, did we get all that?
Uh, I think we got it all, yeah.
Cause the other one that we had been looking at was the state, how the state, um, financials work, right? The, which, I think that was one we had talked about.
Yes.
You know, how does that whole thing work? We may have to have an army of people-
That could be a monthly development, yeah.
Yeah, so from a, yeah, so we'll take up our education, just think about it, uh, in the next couple of days. But in the retreat, one of the line items on the agenda is what do we wanna do for education this year? Um, with that in mind, I don't think that we've come close to spending our, our allocation in, in the budget, so. Do we wanna leave it the same as it has been, just keep carrying the five thousand dollar line item? We'll do the education, we'll do what we need to do and checkpoint next year to see if we need to go up or down. Any special needs we can think about? I know, um...
Is there a, uh, we did, I feel like we've done a vow point one, point two, like is there a two, three point oh of, you know, giving ourselves, like we did a January Saturday of?
Community engagement.
Yeah, cause I feel like we could still use the community engagement, um, like after our board retreat, which I feel like is gonna be focused a lot on us going out for more learning conversations is, um... I don't, I don't, I feel like we could hear that more and more to really kinda hone in our capacity for community engagement.
But that's-
The financials and community engagement seem to be our biggest.
Yeah, but from a budget of how much money we think we might spend over the next year, we, we haven't hit it all yet, but the five thousand seems to be sufficient.
I think it's the general fund.
Yeah.
If the wood cell.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
There's not a lot left after, so. All right, so we'll take, we'll take, uh, another check on that next year as we come through and see if there's anything special we need. Certainly not gonna raise it just so we can spend it. If we need it, we'll find it. All right, any, uh, recent community activities?
Barbecue.
Barbecue seemed to be extremely well attended.
I was super sick, sorry. They're not talking.
No, it was really, it was, it gets bigger every year and more streamlined, the tents are out, families gathering. It was, it's really, it's a really amazing event.
Photo booth.
Photo booth, that was hilarious. They had this old VW van that you could- Photo booth, that was hilarious. They had this old VW van that you could get in and take your-
Brian and I went to the, um, West Street block party.
How did that go?
It was great.
Yeah.
The fire trucks were there squirting water out. It was a hot day, it was awesome. It was really nice.
I seem to be fine-tuning that year after year now.
It was a really good community event, yep.
The, uh, nope, anything else? All right. Okay, uh, upcoming, just a reminder, we've alluded to it more than once, and that is our board retreat on Saturday morning. I think we're set to kick off oh dark early. No, not really, eight o'clock.
It's eight.
Eight?
I get there at eight, nobody else is there.
I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Were you really upset?
Well, the, I think Sandy sent the agenda out today and I thought, I remember looking at it this morning and it was eight.
I thought it was eight to eight-thirty was breakfast to get things started.
Yeah.
Um, and so we've got image coming and we'll be talking some about how do we, how do we move forward with the data that we have? What do we wanna, what might we think we wanna see? Um, and tie those two together and more importantly, how do we use the data that we have to go out and communicate?
Two different times around this, eight-thirty to twelve-thirty and then eight to eight-thirty is the greetings and content of breakfast.
We won't start without you.
If you don't wanna be greeted, you can just slot in.
Call to order is at eight-thirty.
So our, uh, next regular board meeting, October eleventh, uh, UVM Outstanding Teacher Day on the twelfth, and the VSBA VSA Conference, October nineteenth and twentieth. That is, has to me been a, a do not miss. They have some, uh, pretty incredible conversations. You get to meet with board members from around the state. Um, they touch current topics, um, so if you do have the time, that is something that I would highly recommend if you can take the time and make the time to, to do that. Is it too late to, it's not too late to sign up for that?
No, I think there's still space available. If you're interested, you can just email Sandy and she can get you all registered. Uh, if you need a room, if you're staying overnight, she can take care of all that stuff for you.
It's usually a good, I go down early in the morning on the nineteenth, do the day's activities, they do supper, um, stay the night, the next day, there's other, uh, activities and you're usually gone by noon, between noon and one.
Someday maybe, but not this time.
Yeah, and I think it's a Thursday and Friday.
Yes.
So, works out well as a segue into the weekend as well.
And school is out also.
Yeah, school is out.
School is out at that point. All right. Anything we missed? All right, I would accept a motion to move into executive session for our topic on, uh, negotiation. All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we will take a three-minute bio break and then meet. It should be about a fi- oh, probably a fifteen-minute conversation.